My name is Lynn Albright and I'm the District Engineer for TechDOT in the Houston District. And so we're honored to be here this morning to discuss 36A and kind of give a brief, you know, where things stand with that. And I'll be here to answer a question for y'all after we finish this presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to our environmental expert who's overseeing all this, Su-Ti. She's going to complete the presentation and then when she finishes, I believe, our Transportation Commissioner, Commissioner Allison, will say a few words about the project as well. So Sue, you want to come?
Morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. As I said, my name is Su-Ti. Good morning. Su-Ti, I've been with TechDOT now for about 19 years. I'm the Advanced Project Development Director, which means that my section has the schematic design and the environmental review of all road construction projects that have either on the state system or have federal funds within the six counties around the Houston area. So we're here now to talk about the 36A project. Wanted to do a brief safety moment. Please remember always buckle up, drivers and riders, day and night. Be courteous to others on the road. Drive at a safe speed for traffic, weather, and road conditions. Put away the phone. That should be not even an issue anymore. Stop for all stop signs, red lights, and use extra caution when driving at night or in bad weather. We also want to focus on the crash hotspots in Waller County. We pulled data from 2022 to 2024. Several of the FM's, I-10, 290, and State Highway 6. On this, what is this? On this, you can see where the crash hotspots are. You can see them in the darker blue circles. And then the lighter areas are less crash frequency. So the more frequency is the darker, the darker circles. So during the past three years, there have been 28 total crashes involving fatalities, 157 serious injury accidents, 368 with minor injuries, 341 possible injuries, and over 2,100 that involve non-injuries, for a total of 3,118. The specific roadways where the fatalities occurred, FM 359 had five, I-10 had four, State Highway 6 had four, 2855-3, 292, 1488-2, and one, two, nine other smaller roads had one each. So there's some of the numbers. So what is 36A? 36A is a proposed new location transportation corridor. It's separated into two projects, and they both meet at I-10. It would provide additional connectivity in the area, help address anticipated mobility and congestion issues, improve north-south transportation corridor options, and increase options for hurricane evacuation. Where are the projects needed? May I ask why it's needed? As I'm, as I know everybody's noticed, there's phenomenal growth both in and around the Waller and Corbin County areas. Fort Freeport is expanding their operations and deepening their channels. There's a lack of direct north-south facilities in the study area. With all the growth, there's going to be additional need for hurricane evacuation options. 36A is proposed as a new location facility, anticipated to be four lanes and controlled access, which means it would not have stoplights. It would just have on-ramps and off-ramps. It was originally being studied as one long project to go from the Needville area all the way up to the Hempstead area. And after several stakeholder meetings, and around 2020 or so, it was thought that it would be better to divide it into two projects. So the limits go, the north project goes from I-10 up to the 290 State Highway 6 area in Hempstead, and the south project goes from I-10 going south to FM 1994 south of Needville. This creates two separate independent projects where one is not needed to build the other. So you might ask when this can be built. Well, because the process, if we're going to use federal funds, federal funds require you to go through the National Environmental Policy Act process, which requires you to write environmental impact statements if you're building a new location highway, roadway facility that's four lanes or more. So we're required to follow the CFR, the Code of Federal Regulations, for writing an environmental impact statement. In the environmental impact statement process, there are several milestones. The very first one is a notice of intent is published. It'll be published in the Federal Register and local newspapers. And what that says is that the department is preparing an environmental impact statement to study building this facility. That will be followed by public scoping meetings, which is another word for public meeting. And at that public meeting is where alternative designs will first be unveiled. That's followed by a draft environmental impact statement. It's published. That's followed by a public hearing, then a final environmental impact statement, and then a decision on the project, a decision of the alternative. Where are we in the process and what's upcoming? For 36A North, we are looking at doing the notice of availability, or notice of intent that the department is going to undergo the EIS process and have a scoping meeting in early 2026. And therefore, about every year after that, there will be a public meeting. So in 2027, there'll be a public meeting to present the reasonable alternatives. In 2028, the draft environmental impact statement will be published, and a preferred alternative will be unveiled. And then the following year, it'll be the final environmental impact statement, followed by a decision of the alternative. What does public engagement look like? Doesn't like it. Okay, doesn't. Public engagement, there we go. Public engagement. We will have a series of in-person meetings. So the public meetings in person at large facilities where people can come and go and talk to project staff about the project. There'll be videos online, there'll be presentations, and there'll be in English and Spanish. Everything that Houston District does is prepared in English and Spanish. If there's other languages needed, we can, we can translate to those. We just need a request for that. There'll be flyers posted. There'll be mailouts. There'll be postcards sent to people in the corridors, in the study areas. Prior to any public engagement event, it'll be advertised in local papers. It'll be advertised online, the TechDOT website. As I said, there'll be postcards mailed, and there'll be notices posted at community centers, local gathering spots, and will forward us through social media. Nextdoor's the favorite one, and others. Facebook, and a couple others. 36A South is running a little ahead of the north one right now. 36A South, we're actually looking at conducting our first public meeting following the notice of intent being published in the spring of 2025. So that means 2026, we'll present reasonable alternatives at a public meeting. 2027, the draft environmental impact statement and a public hearing would occur. And then 2028, the final environmental impact statement and the decision, record of decision for the alignment selected. Now, the one everybody's wanting to know, where is this thing going, right? That's what everybody wants to know. Well, Waller County has the thoroughfare plan where y'all have identified your thoughts to where the corridor might be, which is published online, which is where I got the picture on the left. And the picture on the right is, just says Waller County. We are at a stage right now of pulling together documentation to issue the notice of intent. So we do not have any lines on a map to show a route at this point. The routes will be, the preliminary routes will be shown at the first public meeting, which is called a scoping meeting under NEPA. It's called scoping. As I said, we're very early in the process. The study team is looking at all possible route concepts and the routes we identified at the first scoping meeting. I put together some quick facts here for you. Each new location project is expected to be about 30 to 40 miles long. So they're very long projects. There will be public engagement throughout the process. We have an estimated letting date, and this is just a total wag in 2037. It's a placeholder because funding is not done identified yet. As funding is identified for the project, letting dates would be moved up. Estimated construction costs in 2025, $36A North is anticipated to be about $2 billion, and 36A South about $2.5. That includes four main lanes and around 30 bridges on each side. And the south project includes all the direct connects going in and out by 10. Frontage roads, we're going to lay an alignment for frontage roads throughout part of the project, but not build them. TechDOT does not build frontage roads. TechDOT would build a limited access facility. So frontage roads, if constructed, would be constructed, would be funded by others. Each EIS, the north and the south, are expected to take two and a half to three years from the date of the notice of intent.
Quite quick, just on the letting?
Yes.
Is that possibly, and I know, I know right now it's all estimates, but is that for the south portion or for the north portion?
Both.
Both.
It's both. We have a project website. On the website, you can find the graphic of the study area and some introductory information. As public meetings are being identified and the notice of intent is pushed out, that stuff will all be on the website also. You can go to both the north and the south segments on the website. And I find it easiest just to go to Google and type in TechDOT 36A, and it'll lead you right to it. And that's my presentation.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. And tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Su-Ti.
Su-Ti. So a few questions, and then I'm going to open it up to commissioners as well. 36A has been talked about for quite a long time. I think since I became county judge, that 36A was being discussed. And in fact, I know going back before that, you know, at one time, we had this big landfill fight going on, and a lot of folks thought, you know, maybe 36A was tied into landfill, or was part of that. Because I think the way it originally was envisioned, it was going to hit 290 and then actually turn and go back and, and hit Highway 6, which would effectively bypass Hempstead. I guess during all of that talk, and this was back when Allen Clark was the head of Transportation at HGAC, when I became judge, the one thing they were talking about was feasibility, doing a feasibility study that would go from the Grand Parkway all the way out to Austin County. Did that ever happen? Was there ever a feasibility study done on the northern portion of 36A? I'm just curious.
Not a feasibility study. The 36A project started several years ago, and it was started as one project going from south of 59 up to the Hempstead area. And they got as far as writing the draft notice of intent. And you have to have, in the NEPA process, it's very procedural. It's administrative procedural stuff. And you have to write certain documents to get to your notice of intent. And one of those alternatives methodology, your public involvement, participation plan, your agency, cooperating agency, participating plan, and others. And, and the project team had put together several of those documents and had gone out and done presentations at stakeholder meetings, different commission meetings, or meeting privately with commissioners throughout the corridor, or economic development groups, about 20 or 30 different organizations. And it was through those meetings that people were saying, you know, we really want this to be a north and a south, two separate projects, not one long project. So, so a couple of years ago, it was divided into two projects, but no, there's not been a feasibility announced or done. That's what the EIS process is for.
The other question I had was, and I know at one point, they did get split out with the south portion and the north portion, and it seems like the south process is a little further ahead. Has there been any discussion? What I'm curious is, if we go through the EIS on both portions, is it, is it, is it the vision, I guess, at this point, that if they both end up going through the process and being approved, and this project's going to happen, would they both be done simultaneously, or would the south be constructed then the north?
It totally depends on funding.
Yeah.
It, yeah, they could easily be built simultaneously.
So Judge, I'll speak to that just a little bit, if I may.
Sure.
So you saw the expense of the jobs. They're billions of dollars. So the odds of having $4 billion dedicated to that in one particular year is probably not very likely. So I would say that it would probably be split up, and it would probably be, you know, we'd have to let it in separate jobs. We wouldn't want to have one.
But the design, that's the other way acquisitions could have.
Correct, correct. The design could, could be concurrent, but, but letting would probably, we would have to phase some of the letting out just, just for funding and contractor wise, if that, if that answered your question.
And the reason, the reason I ask this is just looking at the timetable, and this is the scary part, is, you know, you're looking at letting possibly 2037, two and a half, three years to complete, you're in 2040. At the rate we are growing right now, I mean, we have 70,000, probably 65,000 to 70,000 residential lots under some phase of development as we speak. And a lot of those are being built now in the middle portion of the county, which I don't think anybody really anticipated the level of development that we're seeing. And so if the, my concern is if the south portion is completed first, and then all of a sudden, you have these 18-wheelers hitting I-10, and the north portion's not completed at that point in time, where are they going to go? Because I think a lot of them are going to migrate and get on your FM roads. And at that point in time, I don't even want to think about what our FM roads are going to look like, especially with the current bottleneck in Brookshire. I mean, there's already a backup happening, and I, it's scary to think where we're going to be in 15 years with 250-plus people living in Waller County and using the same corridor.
At that point, you know, I had talked to Liza before, and they, and several of the state, if we could maybe look at doing the, the south phase all the way to at least 362. That way, all of that traffic is not just getting stopped right at I-10 or Highway 90. So at least there was some connectivity, so you're not having to take all that traffic in Wood Road and send it through downtown Brooklyn.
Yeah, it's just, it's, I'll leave on this, and I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners. You know, the public engagement and the public interaction, this is what I've always emphasized. I was involved way back when in the Trans-Texas corridor. I was knee-deep in that. When I moved to Waller County, I poured the foundation on my house, found out I was in the middle of the Trans-Texas corridor, and got involved in that, and in fact, worked with Judge Beckendorf. But that time, he was Commissioner Beckendorf, Justin's father. And, you know, as a result of all that, later, I ended up serving on TechDOT's Advisory Committee to the Transportation Commission on I-69. And the only way you have a successful transportation project is engagement with the public, to make sure it is what people want in their area, it looks, looks like what they'd like to see. So from, from day one, I've always asked for, you know, as much public engagement, town halls, public meetings, as we can possibly get. So I, I just want to reiterate that. So please, when we get to that stage, whatever we can do to make sure people in Waller County are as informed as possible so that they can get feedback and input, that would be my request.
Yes, that would absolutely happen. Absolutely.
All right, members of the court.
My question would be, Judge brought up some very good points along with commissioners. I think it was conversations that you had to try to get that survey extended, which I don't think that has quite happened. So my nudge or push or ask would be, how could we necessarily, not necessarily get the projects on the same timeline, but how could we possibly look at speeding up that northern end survey or study? Because you talk about, he was laying the foundation of his home and everything, and realized that, hey, through the back door of his home, that this highway is going to go. Well, we wait to 2026 to start these conversations. We already have potentially four developments, large-sized developments, that's looking at, if he'd along a route, at which, asking that, hey, where are we at on this? What's the timeline? Is this project necessarily going to happen? You know, developers have friends at the state that now, we have to approve things within 30 days. They're letting us do 45. So how could we get that timeline expedited to show some kind of faith to someone that is looking at potentially buying a home in that area or something? So that way, they can, one, I think the cost, a lot's going to cost to be, too. Hey, call your dad is talking right now.
If you take that, it's the only time you're going to pop back to him.
But the cost with it could, in that area, to be able to get some right away with her, what, what could possibly be all the help, or how could you all help us in that time?
So the idea behind phasing them a little bit was not to confuse the public and, and to do, you know, staffing requirements to do the projects. We didn't want to have public meetings going on on the north and the south at the same time, where people could potentially get confused of the projects, or, oh, I couldn't go to that one because I was at this one. We wanted to separate it out a little bit so that the projects would be distinct, separate projects. They both, they have to go through the same NEPA technical process. And as far as getting them out the door faster, once they get started, it's just a matter of following the process. So once we get the 36A South to the record, to the notice of intent, we can jump right into the, the north section. And honestly, I think the north section's going to go a little faster than the south has because we'll already have templates, but we'll have a template for what it's going to look like, right, on the south, that we can use for the north. We are available to come out and talk to any of the community members at any time, stakeholder community members, to talk about the project so that people are aware of the project prior to the actual NOI going out and the official, the official meetings per NEPA being scheduled.
And one thing you were talking about, you know, that's one thing you're not trying to do extensively, is trying to set aside a pathway for that potential route before there's houses on it. Obviously, I don't want to disrupt anybody or have any surprises for the new, new people that are coming in. So that, with that agreement that we've signed with you guys, that allows us to work with the developers to set aside, you know, a path toward there is no houses. And then citizens, as they come into the neighborhood, they know it's coming, it won't be a surprise. So that'll, that'll be that one. You know, this corridor has been on a map since, and it's changed names a bunch of times. It's changed, you know, east-west, but it was on the map in the eighties. It was the Prairie Parkway for a long time, but I think it was the Lone Star Parkway at one time. And it's kind of changed shapes and names over the past 40 years. But you've got to figure out a way. That was one of the biggest things when we did our thoroughfare plan, town halls, back in 2019. It was one of the biggest things. People said, we've got to have a better way of getting towards the south. When we have, when we had Hurricane Rita threatening to come into Galveston, we had everybody from Houston, Harris County, Grange County, Missouri County, Galveston County. Nobody's going south when there's a hurricane coming in. They're all coming north and west. And so you've got five or six million people that were using Waller County as a parking lot. Our own citizens were having to lock their gates because people were running out of gas. And so, you know, we, we can't think about some of this transportation and connectivity just as a Waller County issue. This is a regional issue.
One of the parts of doing an environmental impact statement is identifying the corridors where the route could go. And I've worked on Grand Parkway since the mid-'90s, actually. And what you end up doing often is you thread it through areas that are undeveloped to miss those. So definitely have experience threading roads through, through areas that are developed.
My hope is that, that a route can be chosen, whether it's 359 or 312, depending on what you think about it. By the time this thing's actually being built, if you're shutting down portions or deterring traffic on either one of those existing FM roads, 15 years from now, it would grind to a halt, north-south traffic will, because it'll all be thrown either to 362 or 359. So I hope we consider seriously a third north-south corridor that is neither 352 nor 312.
Sir, I agree. There's actually a large pipeline that goes parallel to 362, which would make even widening that road somewhat unusable. So putting this road on top of that would probably not be the best ideal situation.
Yeah, I just couldn't, I just couldn't, I just don't see how it would work, the restricting traffic on either one of those roads at 15 years.
Well, that's why I mentioned having the first base go all the way to 5.9, 362. That way, that portion is open when the second base starts, because if not, you're going to follow that, all of that right through downtown, which is where 359, 362 merge.
Yeah. Which is already a disaster.
And if you're the third highest route with fatalities, it's 359.
Yes, correct.
So this kind of ties into Commissioner Beckendorf's question. You know, way back when, at one point in time, there was a, a map, and on that map was, the Prairie Parkway went past 290 and turned and went back into Highway 6. I've always called that the hook. But what, conceptually, what we're discussing here would be something that, that hits 290, and then?
Correct.
Okay. So here's the other question is, in conjunction with that, obviously, if, if there is a facility that hits 290, where is 290 going to be at that point in time? Because obviously, that would, 290, which has already been expanded to Waller, is going to need to be expanded to carry that extra capacity through Hempstead. And then, of course, some, you know, it'll go up, some folks go up to College Station, Waco, and others will continue on to Brenham and Austin. So?
We already have staff actually working on widening 290 right now.
Okay.
Going all the way out to pass the county line. So that's already in process, and have staff working on widening that. And then we've also got a project on the books to expand Highway 6 going north from 290 that, that's programmed.
And you guys will be changing the bridge at Hurley. And, and you guys will be changing the bridge at Burby.
Yeah, the bridge is gonna change, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Albrecht and Mr. Alvis, did y'all need?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Alvis would like to say something. Commissioner, I would like to just talk, just briefly about the timeline. So, again, like she said, and like Sue said in her presentation, this, this project's not funded, and so we have no funding identified for it. And, and typically, our funding's in, in what we call our UTP, or Unified Transportation Plan, which is a 10-year plan, and this project's not in that plan. And so, when, when a project gets funded, that's, that's when you really start hitting, hitting the gas more, and some more streams of, of ability to, to do plan work come to us as well. So, so funding's a big key for this job, and I think in order to have funding, we need support, right, Commissioner? So, I'll, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Sue, great, great job, great presentation. Good morning, Judge, and Commissioners, thank you for having us today. When I became Commissioner of TechStop, this was not yet classified in TechStop terms. You know, we have lots of acronyms and terms at TechStop. As a corridor of interest, it is now. That allowed the environmental to be released and start spending money on that. We had hoped to issue that as one environmental. It became apparent the South was a little head on consensus building than we were in the North. So, there is the possibility of catching those two up, and I'm hopeful we can do that. As you know, south of 10 through Twinwood, you know, that 10, 8, 10 miles is already kind of agreed to in principle for dedication. They've already built about six miles of two lanes of it, and that's on the ground. And, so, you know, I look back at Grand Parkway, and I was involved in Grand Parkway as well back when Bob Lanier was the TechStop Commissioner. He dedicated 249 and, and Grand Parkway. That was 36 years ago, think about that for a minute. So, Sue mentioned she worked on Grand Parkway, it moved a lot of times. And it really became more and more expensive to build, and therefore, didn't get built for 30 years. And one of the main reasons it didn't get built was because developers were building subdivisions in what was one of the five routes that were possible. And there wasn't an, an ability until an environmental impact was finished, that a county or municipality or city could require a developer to set aside that right-of-way, so that when the road was built, we weren't going through somebody's house, right? Now, there is legislation in place that, that is very clear. It, it states that you, as a county, have the authority, once you've adopted your major thoroughfare plan, and you've sent that plan to TechStop, and TechStop has accepted, and of course, are accepting what you all want, you're the leaders in this county. And, and as you know, that's been done now, signed by the judge and signed by TechStop. So, now, any client that comes in for development, you can set that right-of-way aside. Doesn't mean the developer has to give that to us, and we still have to buy it, but we're not necessarily gonna have to buy it with a big building in the middle of it that we have to tear down. So, the cost of building the road, when you say it's 2.5 million on that segment, 2.9 billion, excuse me, on that segment, it's gonna be a lot more than that 10 years from now, we all know that. But we're hopeful that, you know, that we can modify the amount it's gonna cost by having that right-of-way set aside and free to, and led by the leaders of your community and the public. I wanna back up and remind you that, that TechStop's very conscious of who our customer is, it's you. You know, we're under Chapter 7 of the Government Code, which is economic development. So, TechStop is an economic development entity for Texas, for you, the citizens, taxpayers of Texas. And so, what I can tell you, from the short life I've had on the commission and learned, and what I've dealt with over the last 30 years, is when there's consensus in a community about a project, that project moves a lot faster. When there's not consensus, you can't on this road in 40 years. And, and so, you guys are the elected officials, we're here to help you. But again, we're not siding with Rosen, that, that's you and your community. That's gotta work environmentally as well, that you know. But we're here to help you, we're here to move it along as rapidly as, as possible. And when there's consensus, I think we could do that, and, and over time, as you know, with the growth in both Warren County and Waller County, it's gonna be needed long before 37. That, that's absolute, Judge, you're exactly correct, it's gonna be needed. So, there'll be more pressure and more pressure, but if we, if we lose that consensus, that we're all working together for that final cause, and, and through the middle of your county to end up with a Grand Parkway. Look, growth is coming, so you can either embrace growth and have bad growth, you know, or you embrace it and, and do some really good planning. And without this type of artery, north-south through your county, you're not gonna attract the Tesla manufacturing plants. You're, you're going to have a different type of outcome. So, again, we're not trying to dictate outcome, we're just trying to show you the difference. Look at Frisco. When they built the freeway through the middle of Frisco, nothing was there, right? But look at it today, home in PGA, look at their tax base. Look at the quality of what came to that area of our state as a result of the road. Look at 130 in Austin, what's happening now? Tesla's on it, all these factories are on it. Samsung's on the north end, that's up there. I mean, so, you're in control, you're the leaders, you've been elected by the public. What I can tell you is Waller County, even the state, is saying, Commissioner Anzler said, you know, it's like, kinda put your fingers in the hole in the dam, and he's right. And, and so, this is an opportunity for TechStop to work with you, to work with your community, but we've got to have you lead, and, and, but we're here to help you and answer any questions we can to help move this thing forward. You know that I'm committed to try to make this a priority for the Houston District, and I've done that from the day I stepped in as Commissioner. So, with that, I'll, I'll leave you with any questions you have, when I'm available, and appreciate your time.
I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure every one of us has gotten that suspicion with our road bond with, in the middle of, where we're in the middle of that bond, is how come, you knew all the roads was coming, how come y'all didn't build these roads five years ago? I mean, we get that all the time. And so, we know the growth is coming, and we can have just 100% distribution, where people are bringing stuff in, and they're putting it in boxes like Amazon and sell out, or we can have high-quality, you know, manufacturing and, and factories. But this is an opportunity to work with TechStop to get a north-south forward that, whether it's a TechStop or it's a county road, it's desperately needed. And we don't have the funding to, to do this on our own, and so, by partnering, we can hopefully get this thing going before, if, 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 before 2037, but it's not gonna stop. There's no projection that says we're gonna stop moving. So, we can have good growth, or we can have trailer parks, rental communities, because that's what's gonna follow 100% distribution. And so, we get, we're at that crossroad where we get to pick our destiny. Would we want the county to look like a 50-year, would we want it to be rental property, or do we want it to be quality growth? It looks at saying, you either have the table, or you're on the menu.
Are you gonna be Frisco, or are you gonna be up in 1960?
Yeah.
We'll take that, yeah. It's coming, you, you can't really stop it from coming, so it's, it's your decision, it's your, it's your constituents' decision. We're here to help. You can always sell road bonds and help us pay for it, that, that, that allows us to...
Thank you so much. You speak to us. Likely existence, man.
You know, and Commissioner, I think that's why the, the public engagement is such an, an important component, because I, I've been involved in transportation more than I wanted since the Trans-Texas corridor, I probably know more about transportation than ever thought I would. But for somebody who lives in Waller County or just moved in to Lakeview, that's the thing, is that without, you know, if we don't plan ahead, you know, these, right now, you can drive from Brookshire to Waller without stopping on 362. But as these neighborhoods come in, eventually, those neighborhoods are gonna get a traffic control signal. And then, that road is gonna get expanded, and then it's gonna get expanded more, and then you're gonna eventually could end up where it does look like 1960, and that's my fear.
Or 1480.
And that, that is, that is the fear, is that you, you end up with a facility like 1960, which is a state highway, or, or farm-to-market road, that now has, you know, lights every, you know, half a mile, and it, it takes you forever to get from 249 to, to I-45. So, that's what people, I want people to see the modeling, I want, I want them to see what the truck traffic is gonna look like without this kind of facility. That's gonna be on those same FM roads with your school buses. And then you've got possibly 200-plus thousand more people using those roads every day to try to either get to I-10 or 290 to...